Jesse?
Oh, oh, progress. We're getting close. Thank you for your patience. We're almost there. Well, good evening, and we do apologize for the technical difficulties this evening. Thank you for the kindness of your patients. We do appreciate it, and we'll go ahead and begin. This is the City of Morro Bay City Council. It is our regular meeting, Tuesday, May 10th, 2022. It is not 5:30 PM. It is 6:18 PM. That's our start time. We're at the Veterans Memorial Hall, 209 Surf Street in Morro Bay. Thank you for that, and with that, I'll ask the clerk to establish a quorum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
And Mayor Heading?
Present. We do have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order and ask in your own way if we could just take a moment of silence remembering those in need. Thank you. And thank you. And if I can have Councilmember Barton lead us in the pledge, if you'll stand?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, and I will ask our esteemed city attorney, Mr. Newmeyer, do we have a closed session report, sir?
No closed session items to report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, that brings us to council member and our city manager reports. Let's start with councilmember Heller, back from a great vacation.
I have nothing to report, but I want to thank all of you who've put up with the technical difficulties. This has never happened before, and I just thank you very much for your patience. That's all.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Barton?
Okay, I attended a what's called a RAC meeting, and that stands for Water Resources Advisory Committee over in Slow, and I had not been there in person. I've done it a number of times on Zoom, but I had not been there in person before. It was very, very interesting to hear they were making reports on water conditions in different cities and towns around the county, and it was, some of them are pretty dire. It was really interesting to hear. And then, just for heck, I helped serve lunch to the car show participants on behalf of Morro Bay and Bloom. We had a fun time. A little too windy, but otherwise it was, it was nice to get to see people from the car show. So that's it.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Addis, please.
Yes, I got to attend HAB last Thursday, and there was a lot going on at that meeting. But a couple of quick announcements is that youth sailing is starting for the summer through the Yacht Club, and there is going to be an upcoming marine swap meet on Saturday, June 25th, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM that you can find out at friendsofthembhd.org. There was also a very robust presentation from the Quota Club and honoring a tribute, beautiful tribute by the chair, Madam Chair Hansen, for George Lee, who recently passed away.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford, please.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of the amount of time that we have, I'm going to skip most of my announcements, but if you're interested in knowing what events are coming up in Morro Bay, I encourage you to visit morrobay.org. They're all listed there. But I do want to touch on something that I learned about our local elementary school, Delmar Elementary. I'm really proud of our school. You know, being a PTA president there for a few years, my daughters went there. I have a strong connection to that school. It means, it means a lot to me, and I recently heard that they are the recipients of what in the past was called California Distinguished Schools, but it has been renamed because of, in light of our pandemic and all of the changes that had to occur in schools, they renamed it, and it is now called the California Pivotal Practice Award. And there's four categories that our school had to meet, and they did. And those categories are student engagement, tech triage, partner provisions, and social emotional support. And not only did Delmar meet all of those requirements, but they qualified and they, and they won this distinguished honor, and there was over 10,000 schools that had applied, and only seven received it in the state of Califor-- seven hundred, sorry, received it in the state of California, and one out of, one of two in our school district. So I'm just really proud of our school and our administration there and our teachers that have worked so hard and still are continuing to work tirelessly to catch up our students who are struggling due to the pandemic and the effects that it had on them. So congratulations, Delmar Elementary. I'm proud of you. And that is all that I am going to announce this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Good news for our Delmar Elementary School. Fantastic. Couple of announcements. On May the 24th, at 3:30 PM, we'll have a special meeting to go over our budget for the next fiscal year. That's 3:30 PM on May the 24th. We're right here. And then also on the 25th, we'll have a special meeting, May 25th, to discuss the wastewater treatment facility, capital improvement projects, funding, spending, schedule, et cetera, and also a detailed report on the Harbor Enterprise Fund. And then lastly, I attended the Regional Transportation Authority meeting, the RTA meeting on 5/4. They opened their new bus facility on Elks Lane in San Luis Obispo on 3/18, and I attended the ribbon cutting. Fantastic new facility funded by TFIYA money, similar to WIFIA, which is funding our wastewater treatment facility. Their interest rate was zero point, is 0.68%. Amazing, unheard of, especially today. And they are struggling with meeting their schedules, and so for many of you that maybe are riders, there is an extreme shortage of bus drivers or transportation drivers, and they are recruiting like crazy. So if you know anybody that might be interested in being fully trained and ready to be a certified bus and/or transportation driver, please contact myself or the RTA in San Luis Obispo. They're looking for folks to maintain their schedule. Thank you. Mr. Collins, any reports, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, two quick announcements from our Public Works Director, Greg Wallock.
Thank you, City Manager Collins. My announcement is related to a Prop 218 notice that the ratepayers, the garbage ratepayers of City of Morro Bay will receive in the next week or so. So as you all know, Prop 218 is a process by which haulers or water companies or wastewater companies can increase rates. And so the hauler is going to be asking for two rate increases totaling 9.07% of their current bill. And though that increase is related to implementation of SB 1383, the purpose of which is to reduce organic waste in landfills and reduce methane emission into our atmosphere. One of those, so there's two components to that. One is for the anaerobic digester facility, which is not adequately funded at this time, and another is for an increase in trucks for the hauler's fleet in order to comply with SB 1383. And in addition, the IWMA has a 5.4% increase also for implementation of SB 1383. So altogether, we're looking at about 14 and a half percent of rates coming in on that notice. It's actually a bit less because the IWMA already had, I think, a 2.5% fee. So it's actually around 12 or 13% of an actual increase. And then folks will be able to take a look at that notice. They can contact the city with any questions. We're going to put something up on our website as well, and folks can contact Public Works Department with any questions, also the hauler and IWMA if interested. And then eventually there will be a public hearing on June 28th, and individuals who disagree with the rate increases can come and protest those rate increases at that hearing at City Council. So that is my update. Was there another update you had for me?
Paul Miko with Corallo.
Oh, yes. Thank you. So Paul Miko's going to come up. There's been a development with the Wharf program.
Hi, thanks, Mayor, Council, and community members. I just wanted to let you know, we're going to be coming out with a couple of announcements in the next couple of weeks. Anvil, our contractor, is going to be moving to, back over to Maine and Quintana and start working the small diameter purified water line back toward the roundabout. They're also going to be moving down in the next couple of weeks. I think the date was May 23rd for both of these, down by South Bay and Quintana, and then working that purified water line back toward the roundabout. So they'll have two crews kind of going toward the roundabout. And then, good news, I think, or I think it's good news, is Last Tunis will open by the end of June. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Paul. Scott, anything else? Okay, thanks. That ends our announcements for this evening. It brings us to a number of presentations that we have, and the first one is a recognition of one of our former council members, a real cornerstone of this community, and I'd like to invite up any members of the League family to the podium that might be, be here this evening. We have a special proclamation for Mr. George Lee, who served on the council for four years and was a major business person in the community. So I'll welcome up the League family. Welcome.
Thank you.
And this is a proclamation from the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, whereas the City of Morro Bay has learned with profound sorrow of the passing of George William Lee, a former Morro Bay City Council member, lifelong Morro Bay businessman, entrepreneur, and community member, and whereas the League family moved to Morro Bay in 1952. Wow, amazing. And acquired the cannery at 225 Main Street where George worked in the family business, procuring and processing oysters, sea urchin, zabbaloni, and other seafood. And whereas George proudly served his country as a drill sergeant in the United States Army during the Vietnam War. Whereas in 1964, George worked for his father-in-law at the iconic Harbor Hut Restaurant, eventually taking over management and purchasing the business in 1978. And whereas in 1981, George partnered in Brevi's Restaurant, which eventually became Great American Fish Company Restaurant under George's ownership, one of the Morro Bay waterfront's most noticeable and successful businesses that George owned and operated with his family until his recent passing. Whereas in the early 1980s, George launched and operated the popular and unique Tiger's Folly Two Dinner Cruise boat in Morro Bay. And whereas in 1988, George built the successful Harbor House Inn on Beach and Main in Morro Bay. And whereas George was a partner in several other business ventures in Morro Bay, including The Outrigger, Branigan's Restaurants, among others. And whereas George served on the City Council as a City Council member for the City of Morro Bay from December of 2010 through December of 2014. And whereas George was appointed to Vice Mayor to serve in 2013. And whereas George will be remembered in the city and by the city and our community as a dedicated and passionate community member, businessman, and father who anchored several business legacies in Morro Bay and left this community a better place. And I just want to say personally, I had the pleasure not of serving with George on the City Council, but knowing him personally, he was a patient of mine, and, and I just so appreciate all of his dedication. I learned a lot in, in reading this proclamation, appreciate his service to our country in serving in Vietnam, and George will always be remembered as that guy who was always down on the waterfront every day of the week and contributed greatly to the growth of business in this community. So we are grateful to you and your family. We share in your loss and your sorrow. We're saddened to see George leave us, but his memory will linger in the city forever. You should know that, and we thank you for being here tonight, and certainly would welcome any comments that you folks would like to make.
Some big, some deep shoes to fill there, huh?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to talk, but, you know, he really loved Morro Bay, for sure. And, you know, we were definitely saddened to see him go, but in his end there, he was happy, had a lot of pain, got to see his family around him. And because of him, we have the legacy to carry on, and we're going to do our best to do it. But he loved being on the City Council. I know that for fact. So we used to talk about it all the time, and just, you guys really made it great for him to come up here and be part of Morro Bay, and it just continued or finished his legacy by being able to do that. So thank you. It's an honor to have this. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Troy. I appreciate it. Charisse? Totally, totally understand. Well, thank you again for being here tonight, and just know that he, he will remain in our hearts and forever be known as, as that guy that contributed so much to Morro Bay, and we share in your loss this evening. Thank you. So I'd like to invite up, let's see, our second presentation this evening. It's National Foster Care Month, and Felipe Gonzalez from San Luis Obispo County, Social Services. Felipe, welcome. It's my pleasure to present the proclamation from the City Council to you this evening. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay proclaiming May as National Foster Care Month, and it reads as this, "Whereas the City of Morro Bay recognizes the importance of providing children safe, healthy, and loving homes when they are unable to remain in the home of their biological family. And whereas there are more than 430,000 children in the United States in the foster care system. And whereas more than 60,000 children in California are in foster care. And whereas there are over 350 children, youth, and teenagers in the county of San Luis Obispo who are in foster, the foster care system. And whereas to help these children have a healthy, loving, and stable home environment where they can thrive, feel connected to a community that cares for them, and to support the resource families that provide these critical homes, the City of Morro Bay is acknowledging National Foster Care Month to raise awareness about the need for more resource family homes in our county, for local children, and, and will join other organizations to celebrate resource families in our community. And whereas this effort along with similar celebrations in all 50 states and in the District of Columbia will offer children the chance to live with a healthy, loving, and stable resource that families, when they can, when they cannot live with their birth families, and encourage other dedicated individuals to make a powerful difference in the lives of a child through resource family care. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Morro Bay do hereby proclaim May as National Foster Care Month in the City of Morro Bay, and in doing so, we urge all citizens to join in a national effort to raise awareness about the importance of foster care and resource family care." And I just wanted to say, Mr. Gonzalez, that my wife and I have had the privilege in our younger years of being foster parents to over 20 foster children in our lives that came through our home at various stages of, of their growth and development, and I can just attest to the joy and the great honor it is to be able to participate in the growth of young people who are displaced, that don't have loving, caring places to, to live, and don't have a loving family to put their arms around them and just take care of them. And so that's just my personal affirmation of what the work that you're doing, and, and it's a challenge to our community to rise up and be part of the system. And if you'd like to say a few words, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Felipe Gonzalez, and I'm a program specialist with the Department of Social Services. I would like to begin by thanking Morro Bay City Council for presenting the Department of Social Services with this proclamation. During the month of May, we are incredibly proud to honor all of our county's foster and adoptive families, as well as all of the county staff and community partners that support these families. At any given time, our agency has approximately 350 children, youth, and teens in care, and only 120 active homes to care for them. Our youth come into care through no fault of their own, and are often the victims of abuse, neglect, abandonment, or mental illness. In the past, our agency has worked alongside the City of Morro Bay to help raise awareness to this need, and the need now is greater than ever. Our agency is still reeling from the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic and its negative effect on our already strained number of existing resource family homes. When faced with a deficit of this magnitude, we struggle to provide even the most basic resource family matching, and are often forced to place a youth anywhere there is an available bed. This leads to resource family fatigue if it is not a good match, and further placement stability issues if the youth requires an additional placement move. Our hope in sharing this information today is to help bring more eyes to a very present crisis we are facing in our own backyard. Our goal is to recruit, train, and support the development of many more resource family homes in our county. This will yield a greater opportunity for our department to place a youth where they have the best opportunity to heal and thrive while in our care. Each new resource family brings with it an opportunity to serve multiple youth in our county's care, and also provide additional support for our existing resource families who have gone above and beyond serving our youth during this deficit. We would now like to show a brief video that we, that we've created.
I'm afraid we're not going to be able to.
Technically, we have probably so sorry about that, yes.
But I, I've been assured by the city clerk that we'll try to go ahead and get that video circulated on social media as well. So lastly, I'd like to say thank you again for recognizing May as National Foster Care Month in San Luis Obispo County. If anyone is interested in learning about how to help these youth in care, please visit www.slowfostercare.com or call 805-781-1705. Thank you again. Have a good evening.
Felipe, thank you so much, and again, I appreciate you being here and the recognition of foster care. You know, foster families grow as much as these children grow as well. One caveat, those 20 children were not in our house all at one time. It's over a number of years, so I just wanted to point that out. Thanks so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
You bet. Appreciate it. Our next proclamation is for one of our esteemed, yet maybe sometimes unseen heroes in the city, and that is a proclamation that recognizes National Public Works Week, and we have a number of our folks here. Come on up. Wherever you are, I see you're hanging around, and, yeah, right, we got some, we have a slight detour. We could have used that earlier in the meeting. All right, great staff. On behalf of the City Council, it is my great privilege to declare National Public Works Week as May 15 through May 21st, 2022, titled Ready and Resilient. And this is a proclamation of the Morro Bay City Council, and it reads as such, "Whereas the public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of people of the City of Morro Bay. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts, and I mean that dedicated efforts, of the public works professionals who are federally mandated first responders, and the engineers, managers, maintenance workers, leads, analysts, operators, and support staff at all levels of government, and our private sector partners who are responsible for rebuilding, maintaining, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, wastewater systems, public buildings, parks, street trees, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Morro Bay to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest in the understanding of the importance of public works, first responders, and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. And whereas the women and men comprising the Public Works Department in the City of Morro Bay are dedicated to building, maintaining, and beautifying our critical infrastructure in the service of improvements in the quality of life of Morro Bay residents and visitors through the projects such as the water reclamation facility, which will provide long-term water supply resiliency, and the transit hub improvements project, which will upgrade the city's transit hub, and an aesthetically pleasing shelter design for riders and create enhanced accessibility. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Morro Bay do hereby designate the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022 as National Public Works Week, and I urge all agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions that they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Ladies and gentlemen, these folks are the behind-the-scenes folks that you don't see every day, but that really are the heartbeat of public health and safety for our community. And I am proud to introduce Mr. Wallock, who will probably say a few words about his and our great staff. Thank you, Mr. Wallock.
Thank you, Mayor. A few short words. First of all, I'm proud to be standing with everyone that's here from the Public Works Department. This is a very dedicated group. As you mentioned in your proclamation, Mayor, the American Public Works Association has a theme for this year's Public Works Week, and that's readiness and resiliency. I just want to say a couple of words on how true that is for, for this group standing behind me. Number one, this group is just on it. When, if we have an emergency, they are figuring out solutions within minutes. We have folks here who are on call oftentimes, so we always have folks that are on call who sacrifice time from their families to come out in the middle of the night when there's an emergency, and also just ready for all the challenges we face, whether it's related to a complex technical issue in a capital project that no one will ever know about, or some finance situation that we're working through. So we are ready and we are resilient as well. I know that this group, much more than I, have, have been impacted by, by the pandemic here in the City of Morro Bay through some very difficult times, short staffing, some, some budget issues during the pandemic, and, and other issues going on, and they have just put in their all nevertheless every day. So again, we thank you for the proclamation. We remain dedicated and ready to serve. Does anyone want to say a couple of words?
No public works!
And thank you, Pam, for dressing up. This is, this is something of a symbol for us this year, unfortunately, but great costume. Thank you, Pam.
Well, thank you all. Very much appreciated, and look forward to seeing you, and thank you for maintaining our city. We, we very much appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you.
And that brings us, let's see, to our second-to-last presentation tonight. Way in the back, we have, I think, Chief McCray, and you're up front here, Chief Dan McCray from our Morro Bay Fire Department, and we have a number of our first responders with us. Come on up, gang. Sorry about the wait. Appreciate you being here. And this again is a special group of people. This is a proclamation of the City of, City Council of the City of Morro Bay declaring the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022 as Emergency Medical Services Week. And it reads as such, "Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and 365 days a year." They left that out. And it says, "Whereas access to quality emergency care..." And it says: Whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value of the accomplishment of emergency medical services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Morro Bay City Council does hereby proclaim the week of May fifteenth through twenty-first, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week. And I'll just say this: Having been in medicine for forty-five years, when I started, there was no such thing as an emergency medical services provider outside of the hospital. And the morbidity and mortality rate across the world, but also mainly in this country, has gone down significantly because of the training and expertise of these individuals and the prehospital care that is given before you ever arrive in the emergency room. You folks are lifesavers. We appreciate you greatly in all that you do, and we are so proud that you're part of the city of Morro Bay. Thank you for what you do. Chief McCray?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for this recognition. It's really been an honor to be selected to lead these dedicated professionals. They do. They go out and provide a service to the community every day. This year, the American College of Emergency Physicians, this is their forty-seventh year of recognizing EMS Week. And this year's theme is Rising to the Challenge. And given the events of the last two years, that's really significant. These guys really did rise to the challenge with COVID and providing that additional level of care to the public. And just wanted to thank them for all their dedicated service.
Appreciate that. Gang, any comments? Anything to say? Nope, I want to put you on the spot.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you all for your service, and... Sadly, I gave my age away with the amount of service that I provided for medicine, so I apologize for that. Thank you, guys. Now that brings us to a presentation by Vistra Energy Company. Tonight, we have with us Brad Watson to make a presentation on the potential battery energy storage facility that currently is being vetted through the city of Morro Bay, and perhaps an update on some of the things that are going on with Vistra. Brad, we appreciate you being here tonight. Look forward to your presentation. And the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Heding and council members, City Manager Collins and staff. Thank you very much for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. Councilman Heller said that the technical difficulties have never happened before, and this is my first time here, so I hope I'm not a hex. So, I hope it never happens again next time I come by. So Dana, is the PowerPoint available or not? Okay, so we're going to go with a straight presentation, but it will still be chock-full of new information and a little bit of refreshed information, some of which you may have heard before already as we wanted to appear before you. Really, it's been about a year now since we made our first public presentation to the council about what we would like to do to transition the Morro Bay power plant that's now retired into the utility battery storage project that we hope to get built one day sooner than later. So, let me give you a bit of background about Vistra and what it's doing, and a little bit of a... Is that better? Okay, okay. A little bit about us again. Vistra is a Fortune 275 company. We're based in Irving, Texas, which is a suburb of Dallas. So, we're listed on the New York Stock Exchange. We're an integrated energy company, which means we own power plants and storage facilities, and then we sell it through retail brands. We operate in twenty states, including obviously California, but throughout the Midwest into the Mid-Atlantic, Texas, and up into the Northeast, even Washington, DC. We are a leader in the transition of the American Power Grid from fossil fuels to renewable energy. Vistra is targeting, as a foundation, we have a goal of net zero by 2050, which means we are wanting to reduce our carbon emissions down to a level in 2030 of about sixty percent reduction, and then take it all the way down to net zero by 2050. With a bit of a caveat that we have to have government policy, direction, and decisions, but also the technology to go along with it. So, we're doing that by methodically retiring coal plants that we still operate. But importantly, where we're shifting and pivoting now is to building out renewable energy in states such as California. In other states, we're building solar and battery storage, but here, we are focusing on battery storage at three power plant sites that we already own: in Oakland, in Moss Landing, and of course, in Morro Bay. In Oakland, we have a power plant which is one hundred and ten megawatts with four combustion turbines. It's near the port of Oakland, just south of the downtown area. And we're required to run those turbines, by the way, by the grid operator, because in parts of Oakland, they have congestion issues. There's just not enough power getting into where it needs to be. So, we're hopeful to have PG&E come in, resolve those congestion issues. And when they finally get those upgrades done sometime this year, we're going to retire those remaining combustion turbines in Oakland, and we are going to build out through two phases eighty megawatts of battery storage there. In Moss Landing, we still have a natural gas power plant, the Moss Landing Power Plant, one thousand twenty megawatts, powers over half a million homes. But at that large site, which I think everybody has visited on the council right now, and some of the staff members, you know it's a big site. So, in late 2020, we built three hundred megawatts of battery storage there. And then last year, opened up another one hundred megawatts of battery storage there. Moss Landing is the largest battery storage project in the world. And we just got approval from the California Public Utility Commission, and design and start work is starting, for three hundred and fifty megawatts more of battery storage, with the hope that we can add even seven hundred and fifty megawatts more eventually at Moss Landing. And then, of course, in Morro Bay, in late 2020, I think it was December, we put in permit applications to put in a six hundred megawatt facility here at the Morro Bay Power Plant Site. Let me go over some updates now about where we are with the project and some things that we're looking for now to take a bold step forward to get the regulatory process underway. As I said, it's a six hundred megawatt project that we have applied for, and we seek to build out here using lithium-ion batteries. The project would be on twenty-two acres of the former tank farm site, which you've all visited, in a day that was a little calmer than what you have right now with some of the wind. But the tank farm sits next to the generation building in the stack. Vistra remains excited and committed to building out this project here at Morro Bay because it is an ideal site for battery storage for a number of reasons. The central coast location, the existing infrastructure is there. We don't have to build anything new. The Department of Toxic Substances Control, as you know, has put land use covenants on the twenty-two acres where we want to build our project, really isolating it to industrial uses. So, it's just the right site to do so. Then, of course, there's the PG&E substation that ties directly into the CISO grid. So, California needs the power. We all saw the headlines over the weekend of Governor Newsom, CPUC, CEC saying, "In the near term, California may not have enough power during net peak periods this summer, but that also extends years out as well." So California, Central Coast need the power. Additionally, though, when it comes to Morro Bay and what it would do for this community, there are so many pluses on multiple levels. The approval and the construction of this project would finally, finally unlock the potential of that site by putting in the battery storage, and then through a land use plan amendment that would allow that to happen, but also a master plan that would be part of that amendment would then allow for the battery storage to be built, the demolition to follow once the batteries are in, and remember, that would be at Vistra's expense. And then, the master plan opens up the rest of that site for whatever is next. That's what is at stake here by getting this done in a timely way with balanced cost, is to try to move this site forward finally after all these years. So, we think that's just a big plus, as I say, on so many levels. Now, as far as market conditions, we're all living with inflation now. We're all going through that right now, and it's certainly affecting what we're trying to do as well. Across the board, economy-wide, we've all heard those stories. I won't go into a lot of details about labor, supply chain, and so forth, but raw materials in particular are affecting what Vistra and other companies are doing to build battery storage projects. And they're hitting us pretty severely. We are now hearing a lot from our vendors of limits they have, so much so that, and Councilman Heller, you were in construction, this council knows building anything as far as a capital project, you want to have a contract with a fixed price for what you're building. We are having a difficult time right now coming up with fixed prices for some of these batteries because of the raw materials that go into them. Some vendors now are coming up with a raw, rare-earth materials price index adjustment as part of the contract. So, you have kind of a moving target of what you're going to pay while you're trying to do a contract. It's not an easy thing to do right now. So, those are some of the challenges. Just before I came over here today, I looked up what some of the prominent rare-earth materials or rare-earth elements are that go into some of these batteries. In the last year, year over year, price increase for lithium, four hundred and nineteen percent. Nickel, up fifty-eight percent year to year. Cobalt, nickel, manganese, cobalt batteries like we have at Moss Landing, eighty-one percent increase in what the cost is. These are world commodities, so it's a world market out there. So, overall, we're seeing at Vistra up to a forty percent increase in the capital cost per kilowatt hour to develop our projects. Regardless, we are still pursuing them, and that includes Morro Bay in the pipeline. We are still pursuing projects. And as the awareness of what we're doing in California, at Oakland, at Moss Landing, and Morro Bay, and of course, what we're doing elsewhere around the nation, we are starting to also get unsolicited inquiries. And we've gotten a number here in California as well from other entities, owners of commercial property who are saying, "Look, we have this many acres next to a substation." We want to talk to those people. So, as we also pursue opportunities, we're also being solicited by others for potential projects in battery storage here in California. Where that leaves us is that Vistra is opportunistically evaluating renewable investment dollars allocation by potential projects. What that essentially means, as we look at where we are going to build, we want to look at how timely the project is. First of all, can we get in, get the planning process done, the regulatory requirements, and get the project underway? And the other thing is, we want projects that are going to have balanced costs within means to allow us to get the rate of return that we need to achieve for these projects to make sense financially. So, we're looking for those two things. The projects that are in the pipeline being considered, if they have long delays or if the cost become inflated and inflated, then those will move down in priorities, or they will be marginalized. I'm not just talking about Morro Bay. This is all of them out there as we look at this holistically. Kurt Morgan, our CEO, who was out here, whom you all met in August, is just in our earnings call on Friday, was saying, "Vistra will remain very disciplined in how we develop these projects." We want to optimize, lock in value, manage the risks, and move these projects forward to deliver renewable energy to California, but also to make sure that there are returns here for the investment dollars that we are putting into them as well. That said, as far as the development progress for our project, we're still excited about this project. It makes so much sense on so many levels to make this happen. We really appreciate the guidance and the input from City Manager Collins and Scott and his development team on help us getting the necessary really heavy lifting done behind the scenes to get to a point where we are now, we're hopeful, to a point where we can get this SEQA process started. All the requested technical work has been submitted, but time is critical. Again, it's time to get moving on getting an NOP issued, a notice of preparation under SEQA. Our request is, urgent request respectfully, is that it gets done this month. The sooner that we can get through that process and work together, let's try and influence what we can together. There are uncertainties out there with raw earth materials and geopolitics. Some things we can't control, but the things we can control are working through the process collaboratively, working together, and get it to a point where we get approval, and then we can start with some real contour of the project. Look at costs and how we can lock those things in as best as possible. So, our request is to get the notice of preparation under SEQA out this month. It's on track, we understand, according to the staff, and that would be our request tonight. Now, I do want to update you with some really positive news about Moss Landing, because I know there have been legitimate questions by this council. They've been good questions, and also by the public. Chief McCray, I know it's something that's important to him about Moss Landing and the two events we had up there that caused those projects that we had just brought online to go into an unforced outage. Good news. We just released information yesterday in a statement that Vistra expects to have a substantial portion of its four hundred megawatt Moss Landing facility back online for summer. The entire facility will be operational during the summer. We had corrective actions. They were determined in implementation during completion, including the replacement of the connectors that we are all familiar with now, the water-based heat suppression system and testing. The company anticipates we will have two hundred megawatts available in early June. In just a few weeks, two hundred megawatts will be back up, another one hundred and fifty megawatts coming on in June as well, a little later on. The remaining fifty megawatts are anticipated to be operational in August. We have to get some replacement batteries and complete the installation. Of course, we're going to be working with our state and local officials there to make sure all the restoration work gets done. As we said at the outset, when these events happen, we as a company would investigate. We'd find out what happened and get to the bottom of it and release it for everybody to understand. So, just a quick recap. At the time of the first activation of the safety systems, the good news is all the battery modules were working fine. They were working just fine, all operating with their established temperature limits, and we briefed many of you on that before. What happened was smoke detectors were alarmed, causing release of water to the battery heat suppression system, and then we just had a plumbing problem. We had leaks. Hoses on heat suppression system disconnected when the quick-connect couplings were undone. So, found out what happened. What were the corrective actions? We complete repairs and commissioning. The quick-connect fittings have been tossed that will be replaced with threaded connections, so they're secure. The entire heat suppression system will be pressure tested. And also, we're going to go to multiple systems now of alarms, if you will, before water is activated. So, it'll be called a dual interlock, which requires both smoke and activation of a battery module sprinkler to release water to the heat suppression system. That should eliminate activation of the system by smoke that's not associated with battery overheating, which is, you know, in California, when you have wildfires and you have that lot of ambient smoke, that's something you've got to be concerned with. Smoke detectors will be installed in all air handling units to detect any smoke generated in air handling units and outdoors. So, we're... So we're, it was a learning experience for us, but you know, early-stage technology, things are going to happen sometimes that even in design, it isn't anticipated, but we went in, we fixed it, we're going to be back online in a couple of weeks. And with that, I will pause and see if you have any questions. That's the latest that we have for you tonight.
Thank you, Brad. Appreciate that very much, and I'll just ask if any council members have any questions for Brad. Yeah, Councilmember Heller, please.
It's more a comment than a question. Brad, I just want to thank you for doing your presentation without your PowerPoint, and it was very concise, and appreciate the information very much on Moss Landing.
Sure, and we will, Dana has it, and I will get it to you so you can have it in the digital format so you can see what I was talking about.
Thank you, Brad. Very much appreciate you being here. Thank you for the information.
Delighted to be here, and congratulations for meeting in person again. It's wonderful.
Thank you. Good to be back. Okay, that brings us to public comments. This is, oh, by the way, Dana, do we know if our phones are not working or are working? Oh, he's going to find out, you knew I'd ask, yeah. This is general public comment for items on the agenda for which you can't stay, or anything that you'd like to bring up with regards to the city of Morrell Bay. I'll start with my speaker slips, no need to fill them out, but if you have, I'll do those first, then I will move to any public members that want to make comments, and then lastly, see if our phones are working tonight, if there's any calls. So I'm going to start out with Linda Winters. Linda?
I'm going to pass.
You're going to pass, okay. Linda passes. Good to see you tonight, Linda. Michael Wamboldt, Michael, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Michael Wamboldt, Executive Director for Visit Morrell Bay. Just want to give you a quick update on tourism and the work that we've been doing. I hope everybody's been able to enjoy the events that are back. Visit Morrell Bay was a driving force behind bringing our kite festival back, a great sponsor for our amazing car show that happened this weekend, and we have our 26th, 22nd Annual Citywide Yard Sale happening this weekend, which was a driving factor for us to bring back. I have some exciting news for us. Morrell Bay was picked as the location on the cover for the Location Scout Guide for California, so this will be distributed to 5,000 different Location Scouts. This is due to our relationship with Visit Slocow. This is not a paid advertisement, this was picked by the editors of the Location Scout. So they love this picture so much and what it represented for Morrell Bay, and they said it could kind of be anywhere in the world, so they love that. Our Board of Directors has been hard at work, we're working on our new rebranding, which will be, you'll see come out shortly in the next couple of weeks. We have a new tagline that we're not quite ready to release, but you'll see it soon. And also, we're in the last stages of our strategic plan, which would be a four-year strategic plan for us, which will be our guiding light for the next four years, that will be tackling our large-scale initiatives. This strategic plan was taken on by us, so we have this guiding light. We've had surveys throughout the industry as a holistic view from our hotels, restaurants, activities. We've had interviews and then focus groups gone through, and now we're just stealing all that information down, and we'll be coming out with a robust plan for us to move forward with. Outside of that, it looked great to see everybody in person, and I hope to see you out there this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate the update very much. Looking forward to the other events coming up, and great car show this past weekend. Okay, I'll go ahead, next public comment is Erica Crawford. Welcome, Erica.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'll keep it very brief, Erica from the Chamber. First, I just wanted to update the council on our economic development work, specifically our business outreach and bid feasibility study. We've closed our business survey, but we're continuing to conduct some direct outreach to business owners in the downtown and waterfront economic centers. We're going to be holding our second focus group with business owners this Thursday, March 12. Additionally, the flagpole banner project that's in our scope is complete, and the banners are scheduled to be hung up in the downtown starting tomorrow and on Embarcadero next week. These banners were produced by a local graphic designer and a local sign printing company, so this is a completely locally-supported project. Thank you for your partnership at the city, and thank you, Public Works, thank you, Greg, and your staff, in getting this, it's a small, but it's a meaningful piece of placemaking complete in time for the high season. We look forward to wayfinding sign completion, and that's intended to circulate people through all four of the economic centers. And on that note, the Chamber is conducting a series of listening sessions for business owners in each of North Morrell Bay, Quintana, Downtown, and the Waterfront. We'll be releasing a promotion on this listening tour tomorrow, and we will have completed the tour by the second week of June, so we'll make sure to keep you all apprised of those dates. Next Wednesday, we'll hold our third breakfast on the bay. This month, we're focusing on economic development, and we're happy to welcome Melissa James, who's the CEO of Reach, Brad Watson, who you just heard of, from, from Vistra, Tim Cleef, who's a new hotel operator on North Main, thank you for that hookup, Scott Graham, and Michael Wamboldt, who you just heard from, for tourism. So focusing on economic development and all steam ahead. And finally, we have a fun membership mixer scheduled tomorrow night, 5:30 to 7:00 at Marina Square. And actually, finally, finally, the Chamber and Astera Bay News are holding Candidates' Mixer. So it's a Meet the Candidates Mixer next Monday at Coles Bookstore. So all of this information can be found on our website, which is morrellchamber.org. Thank you.
The date of the breakfast, I'm sorry, that was quick.
Sorry, Wednesday, May 18th.
Wait, May 18th, Wednesday. Thank you, and same place, same time?
Same time, same place.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, general public, public comment is still open, any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome, Betty.
Good evening, my name is Betty Winholz. Just two items briefly. One, I want to acknowledge and thank Anvil for getting South Bay Boulevard open as they said they would. I know that was announced last week and it actually, or two weeks ago, and it happened, and it was, it's been very nice, we'll be happy when the roads are smoothed out as well. And then my second point is with regard to something I asked about about a month ago, regarding the trash cans being removed from the harbor walk between the Outfall and the Rock, and wondering where they went and why.
Public comment is still open. Seeing no members of the public, do we have any phone? Okay, phone is, AGP, do we have any phone, public comment on our phone lines? Can't hear you, sir. Anthony, if that's you? We have our mobile transport system working this evening?
This is Carol Truesdale, can you hear me?
Yes, Carol, welcome.
Thank you very much. I hope everybody had a wonderful Mother's Day. My question is for Vistra Energy. It was my understanding that the fire that happened at Moss Landing happened to be with the fans that were purchased from an, I don't, I don't know who the manufacturer was. So if this happened with the fans setting off the fire at Moss Landing, what corrective measures have you set in place that this is not going to happen here in Morrell Bay? I know that cost is a factor, and if these fans were inadequate for your battery storage, why didn't you have a plan in place to stop it? So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Carol. Scott, do we have any more? Okay, we have no more public comment. I'll close, general public comment, bring it back to us. Greg, Betty's comment about the trash cans, Betty, was that between the Rock and along the, you have comment?
Yeah, I do, I'd like to respond to that. Thank you, Mayor. We did look at that, and we noticed that one of the trash cans was removed from that viewing area that's sort of near where the kayakers set up, and that's true. The city did remove that because we just didn't want a trash can right at that viewing area, and it was moved to Coleman Park. So we actually do have a trash can at Coleman Park. And I know that for sure because this morning I received a photograph of litter around that trash can that we then dispatched our maintenance crew to go, to go clean up. So currently, we have one at Coleman Park, and then there's also one going towards Target Rock. I'll have to double-check on that one, but I believe that one's still there as well. So, and I'd be happy to talk with Ms. Winholz after the meeting, if she's still here offline, about which location she's referencing.
You bet, absolutely. Thank you for that, I appreciate it. And Dana, if we could get Ms. Truesdale a copy of Brad's explanation, perhaps she didn't hear it, but that was a pretty detailed explanation. There was no fire, it was just a fire alarm that went off, but he did give a detailed information on that, and I'd like to share that with her as well. Good, public comment is now closed, that brings us to item A, our consent agenda. Items A1 through A9, public comment is now open for the consent agenda. Any member of the public wishing to come forward on the consent items, please do so Seeing nobody in the audience, do we have any calls for public comment on consent? Mr. Collins?
No.
Okay, no calls, public comment is closed. Bring it back to council, any items to pull, first of all? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for either approval or not.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Addis, second by Councilmember Barton, to approve A1 through A9. Any further discussion this evening? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote on consent.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. That brings us to our first business item this evening. This is item C-1, Adoption of Resolution Number 41-22, approving the engineer's report and declaring the intent to levy the annual assessment for the Cloisters Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District. Mr. Qualick, I believe, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, this is our second part of a three-part series for each assessment district, so tonight we'll be presenting just a very brief summary of the engineer's report, and I'll do that short verbal presentation, and our city engineer, Eric Rideo, is present and available to answer any questions, if you have any. So just very, very briefly, the Cloisters District was established in 1996, and the city is under an agreement with the Cloisters District to maintain landscaping, hardscaping, as well as all the facilities in the Cloister tract, that's in the public right of way. We receive as a city $148,944 per year, again, in revenue, and that revenue is intended to pay for that maintenance service, and that assessment is levied on the individual parcel owners in the district. Again, it started in 1996, there has been no CPI escalator at all to increase that revenue, so the city has been at level revenue, though, as you know, costs have been increasing steadily in the past 25 years or so. Historically, we have transferred 10% of the funds, and I'm not sure how far back, by the way, this history goes, but we do transfer some of those funds into what we call the Cloisters Accumulation Fund. So just kind of this accounting setup we had was that we have the Cloisters Maintenance Fund, and we have the Cloisters Accumulation Fund. The idea is, if we transfer some monies into the Cloisters Accumulation Fund, we can sort of save up funding for capital projects in the Cloisters, or larger maintenance-level projects in the Cloisters. And that's certainly a good thing, we have around $142,000 in that fund currently. However, we ran some math, and we found out that the cost to maintain the Cloisters exceeds by a good amount, $148,944, probably by $30,000 to $50,000 a year. And so it simply didn't make sense to continue transferring money into accumulation fund if we're saving that 10%, but again, it's not actually, we're not reducing our level of effort on the maintenance side. So in order to kind of have that make sense, what we've decided to do internally is to, and to propose to you all, is to consolidate those two funds. And so we will retain that balance of $142,000 for projects in the Cloisters District, that's not going to change. But when that $142,000 of surplus funding, saved funding is spent down, we just will no longer have any accumulated funds, and if there's any capital needs in the Cloisters District, we will simply come to City Council with those requests, just as for any other, any other park. And the one thing I do want to note is that, as I mentioned, costs do go up, and that does not mean, however, that we provide a lower level of service for maintaining that district. We do have council direction from May of 2004 that says, any kind of funds that go over the level of revenue that we receive that are required to maintain the park will be subsidized by the general fund. So that is already in action, so there won't be any change on the ground for anyone in the Cloisters. I already mentioned that we have around $142,000 left to spend on capital projects. One kind of big one that we've been reviewing with folks in the Cloisters, one of which is here still, hi, is potentially dredging the Cloisters Pond. That's something that is complicated and expensive, but as any good engineer will tell you, anything is possible. So there are a lot of reeds that have grown in that pond and have blocked the views of the pond, and that's unfortunate, but it is a result of sediment that comes from the stormwater runoff that conveys down, and once the sediment is there, then the reeds grow. A couple of years ago, the city tried to remove those reeds. It did not go well, removing strong reeds while you're on a little rowboat is not, it's not a good, not a good idea, and the reeds grow right back. There are a lot of limitations in how we can treat those reeds because it is kind of a habitat area, so we can't just, you know, put bleach in the pond or something to kill them all. So really, the option that we have left, if we want to preserve that pond, is some sort of dredging operation, and so we will be looking into that, and whether that, you know, $142,000 might be able to fund an environmental look at that situation. It certainly wouldn't fund the entire project. The city of San Luis Obispo, not too long ago, recently dredged Laguna Lake off of Los Osos Valley Road, and those funds actually came from the city, from their general fund and their newer tax measure that they passed recently. So I don't know, I don't remember how much that was, but you know, our dredging project could be anywhere from, you know, ballpark from $400,000 to $1 million, $400,000 to $1 million. So we don't anticipate that it's a small project. So I'll wrap that up there. Again, this is just one step in a process by which the city can levy the assessment to have a continued assessment for continued revenue for maintenance of the Cloisters District. So the recommendation for council tonight is for City Council to approve the engineer's report and declare an intent to levy the annual assessment of the Cloisters Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District. And again, I'm available for questions, as is our city engineer for the report.
Thank you, Mr. Qualick, appreciate that. I'll start with a few questions, maybe that you can answer for me. One is in the staff report, but I'm calling out for public consumption, and that is the fact that you note that the CPI index, when this initial 1996 fund was established and assessment was established, was 157, and at present, or this year, it's 287, which is an 83% drop in purchasing power? Yet your department has been able to maintain the same level of service over all those years? Is that with, I guess, some use of the accumulation fund being transferred over?
Yes, that's correct. I'm not aware of instances where we've used the accumulation fund to support the maintenance effort. That's typically been reserved for special projects in the Cloisters District. But the short answer is yes. I mean, I was not here 20 years ago, so I don't, but from what I understand, we still have the same level of effort on the maintenance side with essentially less purchasing power, yes.
And if I heard you correctly, the plan now is to, because costs are going up and you, the assessment will not cover what you need to do there, that you're going to begin using funds from the accumulation fund, which were for capital projects?
Close. We won't be using that accumulated money for maintenance. We will reserve that money for capital work or larger maintenance projects. So when we say capital work, you know, we here in the city have a standard definition of what a capital project is, and one of the defining characteristics of a capital project is that it's $50,000 or over, but you know... But, you know, there may be a large $20,000 capital project. That would be a big project for the Cloisters. So that fund, those saved monies would be reserved for those sorts of projects, yes.
And you mentioned that costs continue to rise about $30,000 to $50,000 a year in order to keep up. That was a quote. Is that the maintenance costs?
Yeah, so if that was what I said, then I apologize. What I meant was, at this time, we believe that our cost of maintaining the Cloisters District is approximately $30,000 to $50,000 above the revenue that we receive from the Cloisters.
Okay, I see. Thank you for that. And then, given that, what's the plan in terms of the sources of funds to be able to maintain the same level of maintenance that you have in the past?
Yeah, thank you for that question, because that dovetails into the idea that the city, through council direction in 2004, will subsidize maintenance at the Cloisters District through general fund.
Is there a limit on that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Perhaps Ms. Rios knows, is there a limit on that? I mean, that's an open door, endless amount that could be drawn down from the general fund? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Sarah.
That's okay. I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, so there's going to be a shortfall of approximately $30,000 to $50,000 per year. $30,000, I'll go on the low side. He's giving me the low sign. A shortfall in terms of maintaining it at the same level that the current assessment will not meet.
Correct.
In order to subsidize that, my term, which I think is an appropriate term, that money will come from the general fund. Is there a limit on how much can come from the general fund to subsidize that?
There's no legal limit.
Okay. And have we ever considered increasing the assessment? Has that been discussed at all?
I don't know the history of that and whether that's been considered in the past. Certainly, that's something, and, you know, I would encourage the city attorney to chime in. But if the assessment were to be increased, my understanding is that would have to be put to a vote of the folks who live in the Cloisters District.
That's correct. Okay, I'm looking at page 34 of your staff report. And the very last paragraph says, "In order to mitigate the environmental impacts of the project," which was the Cloisters project, "and to provide a greater-than-normal public benefit, upon modification of otherwise applicable standards as required in a PD overlay zone, the conditions of approval for the project require the applicant," which I assume would be the builder, "to form an assessment district for the maintenance of the public park, bicycle pathway, right-of-way landscaping, coastal accessways, ESHA restoration areas, and other improved common areas to be privately held or dedicated to the city." "The public park area, as well as all open space improvements in the assessment district, were part of the many detailed discussions during the city and Coastal Commission hearings." So am I correct in assuming that this was a condition of approval, not only by the city, but also the Coastal Commission?
That's my understanding.
And that was mitigation, is that correct?
Yes, for the environmental impacts.
And so now the city is going to bear the burden of mitigation for the development, which inures to those that live there? Is that correct? I'll ask Chris. Is that?
If the general fund is subsidizing the work, then yes, the city will be subsidizing the improvements that are occurring out there.
And again, is that, I apologize, I think you said via ordinance, or is that codified? Via an ordinance?
My understanding is that in 2014, council directed staff to supplement the shortfall through general fund. I'm not certain on what vehicle that took.
Was that for one year, or was that?
I have not reviewed that. I'm not sure. Maybe another staff member knows.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are my questions. Apologize. Other questions? Councilmember Ford, please, yes.
Well, after all those questions, I have a couple of remaining ones. One of them is, you mentioned in the report here that eventually the surplus will be exhausted. And do you have any idea, like, I know you mentioned, you know, dredging, of course, like, to just explore that opportunity, might even drain that surplus fund? Is that, do you have any idea how long that will last?
Great question. Certainly, in this economy, considering inflation, I would not want to predict any, how far the money would go. But I would say that we work very closely with folks in the Cloisters in making these decisions. So any time we would spend this money, we would be consulting with representatives from the Cloisters.
Okay, that's good to know. I think it's important. Thank you. And then I had another question that came up when you were talking about dredging, because this wasn't even something I was thinking about until you mentioned that. And so has it ever been, you mentioned that they went out there with a boat and tried to pull the reeds, and it was unsuccessful. Has it ever been dredged before? And if we were to dredge it, how long do you even, would that be another, like, 20 years before it'd have to be done again?
Yeah, great questions. It hasn't been dredged before. Just looking at it, and these are all things we'd evaluate, but just looking at it, we believe that we could put in a system of check dams that would actually run along that ditch parallel to the one, that would allow for kind of water to tip over the check dam, but leave the sediment behind, so that in the future, we'd be pulling sediment out of those check dams, but not the pond itself. Again, technically possible, but we don't have a full design or environmental evaluation of it. But that would be the idea, to put in some system where we wouldn't have to dredge the pond again.
Okay, so that sounds pretty involved, dredging, and then that system as well. So it'd be a pretty good project, pretty sizable project. Okay. And I just wanted to say that I did attend via, I think Zoom, or however they did it, with AGP for the joint P-WAB and the Rec and Parks meeting, where you guys went around all the different parks and talked about capital improvement and that sort of thing. And there were some really great ideas that were thrown out there. So I think it's wonderful that we're, you know, looking at that and, like you said, reaching out to their community, the Cloisters community, and getting in touch with them on what projects are in the future. But that's all, those are the only questions I have. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say thank you because typically this comes before us, and we haven't had this level of detail before. And so super helpful, and Mayor, your questions were very helpful, I think, to clarify a lot of the background to this that we just haven't discussed in public, maybe as long as I've been on council, at least. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Barton, questions?
I don't have any questions either, but I also wanted to thank you for more in-depth information than we had before.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. To follow up on your comments, will staff be looking into how the direction that the council gave on May 24, 2004 was documented? Or what the, I think that's a good question that we need to get answered, unless someone knows?
It was by resolution.
Okay. It's my other question.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor. May I interject?
You may interject anytime.
I just want to make sure I'm giving the whole picture, and I may have been remiss. That the Cloisters District also, you know, it has Cloisters Park, and that does serve as a public park that's open to anyone. And as well, the stormwater, so that pond serves as a stormwater basin. It doesn't look like it. It looks like, you know, kind of a nice feature for the park, which it is. But that captures the stormwater off of Highway 1 and from stormwater coming up from North Morro Bay. So if we go into that dredging project, we would do so in the eye of it being not a beautification project, but some sort of stormwater project that impacts parts of the city that are not in the Cloisters. I just wanted to call that out.
Appreciate that. That's a significant clarification, and I'm glad you did that, Greg. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item C-1 on our agenda this evening. And I'll start with Speaker Slip, Ms. Dawn Beatty. Welcome, Dawn.
Surprise, surprise. Greetings, Mr. Mayor, city councilmember staff, people watching from home. My name is Dawn Beatty, and I live in Morro Bay, and in the Cloisters. I want to thank city staff for acknowledging that the city takes its share in the financing of the maintenance of the Cloisters Park and Open Space. As you indicated, there are many people using the park. This last week, there've been buses bringing in children and people from Rosedale. They came back in 2004. I found pictures from there. And they were back again this last week, so, anyway. As I've said annually for the last decade or so, it's not just homeowners who benefit from the park that we have solely paid for. Back in 2004, the city began subsidizing costs that were greater than the assessment district's revenue, as has been mentioned. Unfortunately, the city manager at that time created an IOU that the assessment district was supposed to pay back. In 2014, that IOU was overturned, and the city returned the money to the assessment district. Since that May 2004 ruling is being pointed to as a direction for this latest decision, I would like assurance that what happened then doesn't happen again. I also wish to offer my support of staff's recommendation to adopt Resolution 4122. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Public comment is still open. Any other members of the public wishing to come forward? Please do so now. Seeing none, I don't know who to ask. Do we have anybody on the phone, AGP, for public comment?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We will close public comment, bring it back to council. And perhaps I could just begin by summarizing. I'll be supporting this item this evening. However, I do have concerns that I've raised on a number of occasions. And those are the potential, not depletion, but significant reduction in general fund due to the, my word, subsidization of the lack of assessment being able to keep up with inflation over a long number of years. I'm really concerned that without limits, that there may be problems in the future. I know the agenda item is not this tonight, so when I get to future agenda items, I'll be bringing this up and looking for maybe further information for us to get a handle on that. But I will be supporting it this evening. Thank you. Other comments? Okay, yeah, councilmember.
Yeah, I support what you're saying, Mayor. I think this is something that we need to resolve because obviously it's the subsidization of the assessment district is only going to grow from the general fund. So I look forward to your future agenda item. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I appreciate the comments from Ms. Beatty on the fact that, you know, it is a park that we all use within our city for various events and tourists as well. And I will be supporting this resolution. I think it's important that we do so.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Any other comments? If not, then I will recommend that we adopt Resolution 41-22, declaring the intent to levy the annual assessment for the maintenance of the Cloisters Park and Open Space for fiscal year 2223, and approving the engineer's report.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Barton. Motion by Mayor Heding. Any further conversation? Discussion? None? All right, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you. That completes item C-1, brings us to item C-2. This is adoption of resolution number 42-22, approving the engineer's report and declaring the intent to levy the annual assessment for the North Point Natural Area Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District. You're up again, Mr. Qualick. It's your night tonight.
Apparently it is. Thank you, Mayor and council.
It is Public Works Week. So coming up.
I'm feeling it. Very similarly, I'll do a very short presentation, even shorter than the Cloisters presentation. And if there are any technical questions or questions about the engineer's report, we do have city engineer Eric Rideo available for questions. So the North Point Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District was established in 1996. This one gets far less revenue than the Cloisters District. We only receive $5,645 a year. There's only 10 parcels that pay into it, and they're paying $564.50 annually. And again, there is no CPI escalator on that revenue or on that assessment. So costs have gone up since 1996 in the same ways they have for the cost to maintain the Cloisters District. And we do continue to maintain that at the same level of effort. So this assessment district is different than the Cloisters in that there is no accumulation fund. So the city has not historically been putting aside 10%. There is no fund of money for capital projects. Actually, the intention in our budget proposal will be that this fund will have a zero balance at the end of the year. So essentially, we spend through the fund every year. Our maintenance tasks at North Point include landscaping and irrigation, graffiti and litter removal, and tree trimming. And that's really my short summary. Continuation of this assessment does require city council to approve annually the city engineer's report and declare the intent to levy the annual assessment. So I'm available for questions, as is our city engineer.
Appreciate that. And with that, I'll open it up for questions. Councilmember Ford, yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Qualick, I have a question about, you said there's typically, you know, into the zero balance. And so is there any maintenance that is not being done because of your limited amount of money, or is it plenty and it's getting the job done?
The challenge to answering that question is that we don't measure hours worked, staff hours worked at that site. I am sure that our level of maintenance effort costs more than the $5,600. I'm sure of that, but I could not give you a hard number. The way our payroll works in the background is employees are allocated to certain funds at different percentages. And so in our case now, I believe in the upcoming fiscal year budget, we are not allocating anyone's time at all to maintaining the North Point Assessment District. It's just if there's utility payments that we have to make there, services and supplies. So we're not allocating any staff time at all to be funded through this assessment district. Nevertheless, we're there all the time, maintaining it. So this is another example of, again, costs going up, revenue staying the same. But I wouldn't be able to tell you how much.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Addis, any questions?
I don't have any questions because this one is so standard and comes every year. So thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions. Councilmember Barton?
I have no questions either.
And Councilmember Heller, sir?
Yes, so if this comes before council again, will you be able to tell us the costs for maintaining North Point?
With the way our system is currently set up, no, because that would, we would have to change how we track staff time. So, you know, in theory, it could be done. We could have a workaround where anytime a staff person's there, you know, we could track it on a separate spreadsheet and then calculate it monthly or something like that, and maybe get a good estimate. But we don't currently have a way of measuring that to the dollar.
The other question I have is, I mean, I've been out there a few times. It doesn't seem like there's a lot to maintain, but maybe I'm missing something. There's no park that's used heavily by public from outside the area. It's kind of a little secret spot, really. You mentioned a number of things that you do there. Could you give me a little more detail what you do in terms of maintenance?
Sure, there's some light landscaping that's done there. I've seen our crews up there doing that work. There is occasionally graffiti there that we show up to remove. There is occasionally graffiti there that we show up to remove. I believe there's lighting there because it is a lighting maintenance assessment district, so there is lighting there, and so there's a utility bill that comes that has to be paid for this revenue source, and there is irrigation there as well, so that means we're also paying for water.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thanks.
Great, thank you. I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for Item C-2. On the agenda, any member of the public wishing to come forward? Please do so now, and welcome, Betty.
Betty Winholtz, this is kind of a trailhead for where people go down to the Dog Beach, so I'm pretty familiar. I go there frequently. And for those of you on the council who don't, the North Point parking lot and the area, grassy area around it, is basically an open space. It was never intended to be kept up as a park. It's just as a natural area, and it's labeled that way as a natural area. Where our dollars go, or where the people who pay for those dollars go, is along the strip between the street and the parking lot. That's where the lighting is. That's where the watering is done. So, the public, in essence, really receives no benefit. The people who live there receive the across-the-street benefit of their trees being trimmed, and my guess is that a lot of the money probably goes to the utility of the electrical costs. I know there was a light put in finally in the park, but I think it's important to know that, at least as a layperson, I have, or if I was paying into the assessment district, I would have a problem if I didn't know how my money was being spent or how the staff was spending their time there. And so, I think it would behoove us to both assessment districts to be able to articulate those to the council so they know whether they need more money from these people or not. Thanks.
Thank you, Betty. Public comment is still open regarding Item C-2. Any member of the public wishing to come forward? Please do so now. Seeing none, do we have any calls, AGP?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no raised hands in the queue.
And thank you for that. I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back for either a motion or further discussion. Okay, I will go ahead and move approval or adoption of Resolution Number 42-22, approving the engineer's report and declaring the intent to levy the annual assessment of the North Point Natural Area Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District.
I'll second.
Ooh, I thought I was gonna die for a second. Motion by Mayor Heading, seconded by Councilmember Heller for the staff recommendation and a further discussion.
Yeah, I have another.
Absolutely.
I think it would be good, when this does come back, if it comes back, that we have some cost information about, even if it's a spreadsheet, if it's not too burdensome, I think we do need to look at that, so, thanks.
Thank you. Other comments? We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries five vote.
Thank you. That ends Item C-2. Brings us to Item C-3.
Mayor?
Yes.
I actually need to recuse myself from this item due to my personal business arrangement. That could be a conflict of interest, so I'm gonna remove myself.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Ford. You are recused. This is Item C-3, introduction of ordinance Number 652, allowing smoking receptacles within the city right-of-way. Mr. Qualick, you are back. My goodness.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Welcome back, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you. Pleased to provide a verbal presentation about this item. This is something we're pretty excited about. There are a lot of cigarette butts out there on Morro Bay streets, sidewalks, gutters, roadways, open space, parks, et cetera. There are a lot of dedicated volunteers. I don't see any of them that came in today, but that are out there on the weekends and during the week picking up cigarette butts. I've spent some time with those folks, and they are, I really appreciate their efforts. And it's pretty interesting because we have all these cigarette butts yet. Chapter 9.24 of our municipal code prohibits smoking in public places, and so this is a problem that all cities on the Central Coast are feeling. It's not really clear how to handle this situation. It's hard to catch someone throwing a cigarette on the ground. It's very difficult to enforce. There are challenges there, and cigarette butts are polluters. They put toxins into the ground after it rains. They're unsightly, and there's just a lot of reasons to not want them around. And the difficulty of our ordinance is that we cannot put up cigarette receptacles because I suppose that that might encourage smoking or may give the wrong idea that smoking is permitted in the city. We were recently approached from Tobacco Control at Slow County with an idea to place receptacles paid for by the county around the Embarcadero and the Rock Parking Lot area. I believe they've offered us five of them, and we were very interested in this because we thought it could mitigate some of the impacts of these cigarette butts on the ground, but then learned that our ordinance would prevent us from putting them up. So, this ordinance change would essentially allow me, the Public Works Director, or any future Public Works Director, at his or her discretion to place cigarette receptacles in some public places. And so, what we're asking for tonight is the introduction of the ordinance and for council to, well, to simply introduce the ordinance to allow the Public Works Director to do that. I'd just like to say a few things. We do have Amy from LA County, thank you for sticking it out, Amy, from County Tobacco Control. We also have Derek Hanson here, who put this report together and did the research with the support of the City Attorney's Office. He's our new engineering tech in the Public Works Department, so thank you, Eric. I'm sorry, Derek. And for your viewing, pleasure is a stainless steel cigarette receptacle, and this is what we would be putting up. So, that is my presentation. I'm available for questions. Derek is available for questions, and I believe Amy is gonna want to come up and say a few words. Can I allow Amy to do that now, or is that a comment? Would that be a public comment?
There are no ifs, ands, or buts about it. She may come now.
Come on down, Amy.
Come on down, Amy. It's getting late, folks. We had a long delay, sorry. Welcome, Amy.
Yes, thank you all very much. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and community members. My name is Amy Gilman. I am the Tobacco Control Program Manager. We're a program that's housed within the County Department of Public Health, and it really is my pleasure to be here. The beautiful receptacle that Mr. Qualick was demonstrating, for the verbal description is it looks like a long two-foot cylinder, say, that would attach to a post or an existing pole and actually serve specifically to capture cigarette butts. We do believe that electronic devices could slide in there as well, but they'd have to be fairly short to round that opening. They do have these very beautiful, in my opinion, stickers that are on them. To create this product, we actually partnered with your, let me get the right word, the Central Coast Partners for Water Quality Central Coast Clean Social Media Campaign. So, we joined that program just to be able to help develop this and to create tobacco-specific social messaging that will, if you recall from that program, it is social messaging and digital ads that populate cell phones when people are in particular geographic areas. So, if a tourist comes here, they could get your, the advertisement that says, "Don't drop your cigarette butts" in Morro Bay, basically. So, our tagline on that campaign is, "The world is your oyster, not your ashtray." We actually did a small consumer testing to, and landed on that particular messaging, which apparently is being well-received. The analytics are showing it's trending well. We also have on that sticker, an advertisement for the state's free quit service. This is a state-provided quit service for those who would like to quit any form of tobacco use, and they offer that program, I'm going to promote it, they offer that program for free in six languages, and they offer it via telephone service, text service, and there is even an app to help you with your quit process. So, that's what I would like to say about that. We definitely wanted to add the promotion of the quit service because, as we know, the waste is simply the end product, and yes, that tobacco waste does not break down. It simply dissolves and becomes part of your microplastic biome that's out there infiltrating everything. So, in order to ultimately stop that waste, we need to help people quit the habit of nicotine. So, I'm glad we could be a partner, and if we could help going forward, we'd certainly be happy to do so.
Thank you, Amy, and the County Tobacco Control Agency has been a good partner and a great partner with Morro Bay and a number of changes to our ordinances in the past, and we just want to thank you and appreciate the work that you do as well and your assistance with this project.
You're very welcome. You do have a marvelous ordinance, and it was, and I know the one ordinance that we're seeking to change was actually done there on an ideal model. Unfortunately, the necessity to assist the quality of your waterways kind of trumped that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open it up to council member questions. Councilmember Addis, any questions?
No, I don't, but thank you so much for the dual partnership, the dual effort. Very much appreciate it.
Councilmember Barton, any questions?
Just a comment. I'm intrigued to hear about the California Quit Service. That sounds like a really productive possibility.
Sorry, I stepped away there for a moment. Yes, it really is. I don't know if you knew, in the past, traditionally, the county tried to support group therapy for quit services, but the need is so large now, and the language needs are much larger than we're able to handle at the moment, and so we're really working to increase referrals to this free service and help more people. The service, actually, they're reaching down to age 13 these days through the state program.
So, is that, is that active in all counties, all over the state?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, great.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes, I think, Greg, you mentioned you were gonna monitor these, put them in certain locations where you have a lot of cigarette butts, and then track how much effective it is. Is that, can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so, thank you for asking that question. That's a key part of the partnership, is that we will be tracking weekly how many cigarette butts by volume go into these receptacles, and depending on the success, and success means a lot of cigarettes in the receptacle, depending on that success, the program may expand at the county. We may be able to potentially get more receptacles in the future, and they may be able to expand this farther out into other parts of the county as well, so we would be very pleased to be a part of that program.
In what areas specifically are you, where do you expect to put these in? Where are the worst areas in terms of cigarette butts?
Yeah, so certainly the Embarcadero, Target Rock area, Morro Rock Parking Lot are the areas that I've personally seen and have a lot of cigarette butts on the ground, and in talking with folks who volunteer and go around and pick these things up, those are the hotspots. It's very common for visitors and possibly some residents to come and see our beautiful landscape and stop and enjoy a cigarette and then throw it right on the ground in that, you know, beautiful area. So, unfortunately, those resources that we have are usually the areas that see a lot of cigarette butts on the ground.
Okay, thank you. Great, thank you. Appreciate it very much. With that, I'll open up public comment for Item C-3. Public comments now open. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this, come forward. Betty, welcome back.
Betty Winholtz, not a big item for me, but I do know that along, since you mentioned along the Embarcadero and out to the Rock is where we have the buckets, which says, "Park your butt here." Will those buckets disappear, and these will be taking their place, or how will those two programs interface?
Thanks, Greg. Go ahead.
Sure, yeah. I appreciate you, Ms. Winholtz, for bringing that up. So, as I understand it, those buckets are a community effort, and so we certainly wouldn't want to put one of these new receptacles right next to one of those buckets. We'd want to space them out so we get greater coverage, and we have no intention of removing those buckets, so we think that the two programs can coexist.
Thank you. Okay, any calls for public comment, AGP?
We have no raised hands in the queue.
Great, thank you. We'll close public comment, bring it back to council, entertain a motion or further discussion.
I'll move to approve this item.
Okay. I'll go ahead and second. It's a motion by Councilmember Addis, seconded by Mayor Heading for introduction of ordinance Number 652, allowing smoking receptacles within the city right-of-way. Any further discussion? Yes, Councilmember Heller?
Yeah, Greg, so I don't know if you're working with Morro Bay Beautiful, but they're the owners of those buckets, and maybe you can coordinate the locations with them. Just a thought. Thanks.
Good thought. Thanks. Further discussion, seeing none? We'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 401.
Great, and Derek, thank you for your work on this. Appreciate you being here late tonight. I know Qualick gets a lot of the credit, but you deserve more. I do appreciate you. Thanks. And that brings us to Item C-4. I'll just check in with my peers. Do we need a biofluid break, or did you want to continue? Yes, I see at least one head nodding. That means that we will go ahead and take a three-minute break or so and be back. I have 8:04. See you at 8:07 or 8.
I saw you guys. Who even give the candy back here?
Oh, sorry.
Got the igloo jacket on. It did get cold here, didn't it? Are back. That brings us, welcome back. I don't know if we're on, I don't think we're on TV, but in case we are, welcome back. We are on item C dash four. This is City Council Goals and Action Items Update. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to not Mr. Qualick, but Mr. Collins. Yes, thank you.
Yeah. He has to rest his voice. Scott Collins, city manager. Thank you, mayor, council members. I'm gonna give a presentation on the, kind of where we're at with the action items related to city council goals. Just a quick reminder, council adopted the city goals for all of the remainder of 2021 at that time, 2022, and into early 2023, and also 35 related short-term action items to help achieve those goals. Just as a reminder, those five city goals are to improve public infrastructure, achieve fiscal sustainability and economic vitality, address housing needs, climate action, and improve community health. As I mentioned, there's 35 action items that were identified to help kind of move forward those goals, recognizing that you're never gonna ever achieve those. You're always gonna have needs that you're gonna be working on in those areas. And of course, we do this on a two-year cycle, review the goals to make sure we're keeping up with the needs of our community and use surveys and community forums and other methods, including advisory board meetings and committee meetings, to get input from the community to shape those goals. So again, those are the five goals that we're working towards, 35 action items. I'm gonna cover the 28 action items that are currently underway of those 35 by each of the goal areas. So under improve public infrastructure, conduct a traffic speed survey. Staff will be requesting funding for a traffic speed survey through the fiscal year 22, '23 budget. Next one is to initiate a capital assessment effort. City staff will be requesting funding to conduct a capital assessment for the harbor, as well as other areas of, capital areas of the city through the fiscal year 22, '23 budget. Review options and develop optimal staffing for city maintenance efforts. Council did approve staffing enhancements in the mid-year budget process for this year. Initiate work on a paid parking pilot program and continue work on a long-term plan. So we have Walker Consultants who did the first phase, are now under contract for the next phase of the pilot project. We'll be seeking information from, or input, I should say, from the parking stakeholder group, and likely bring forward a plan to council in the fall of this year. Pursue funding or grant opportunities for Coleman Beach area. Council's already authorized submission of several grants through the California State Prop 68 for improvements to Coleman Beach area, and we're looking for other funding opportunities. Under achieve fiscal sustainability and economic vitality, first one is to seek state lobbyist contract to assist in obtaining state funding for city projects. Council approved a contract with Townsend Public Affairs. And we also have a federal lobbyist contract with the Ferguson Group. Next is assess viability for business improvement districts for downtown Embarcadero. We're currently partnered with the Chamber, doing a survey of business owners in that area and employees. Hopefully, we'll have information from that effort to bring forward to those groups, as well as city council in the near future. Review development opportunities for Market Plaza property. The city recently completed its notice of availability timeframe with regard to the state's surplus land act, AB 1486, and can now pursue redevelopment opportunities on that site. Complete a fee study, in particular, development impact fees. So city staff is in process of completing review of the draft study, and will present to the council this summer, and also consult with the Chamber on that. Continue review of Vistra proposed battery project. You heard an update from Vistra representatives this evening, and they have submitted a project that will go through a pretty robust review, particularly on the EIR side and through the staff in the planning department. Assess cybersecurity needs. City staff has conducted an assessment, has already made and implemented improvements, which we will not state what those are, obviously, but definitely are working on that and continue to assess the needs on an ongoing basis, given what the state of affairs are with, on, on cyber. So it's a, it's an ever-evolving field. Prepare and review policy options on liabilities. So city council already moved forward with the creation of a 115 trust fund, and we're currently in that process, which will include member of council, two members of council, member of CFAC, and staff in our financial advisors, and we'll bring back consideration next fiscal year. Under address housing needs, complete a zoning code update. Staff is currently working on the final touches with coastal commission staff. Hopefully, bring forward something to planning commission this summer and council later this summer or fall. Develop stock accessory dwelling unit templates to provide to the public for free. Staff is working with our county partners to finalize those ADU templates. Anticipate work complete in June of 2022. Provide update to city council on new state housing legislation, such as Senate Bill 9 and general education on housing. It's already been done, but will be ongoing, obviously. Implement housing element. Staff's working to develop and finalize core components of the housing element, including an inclusionary housing ordinance, subjective design standards, and density bonus. They'll likely bring this to council in the summer or fall. CSAL state land use amendment regarding density. So city staff will be presenting to planning commission in June on that, as well as city council this summer. Complete City Works online plan check application. Staff has implemented the online application, is, in testing the system, correct? Yeah. And hopefully, we'll finalize that later this year. And initiate work with the planning commission ad hoc committee for review of the planning process. The committee is formed, and we'll begin meeting once the City Works online plan check is fully implemented. Under the next goal of climate action, pursue electronic, electric, sorry, vehicle charging station funding. We do have a grant that we're already been awarded, and we're working to finalize the remaining portions of the funding to look to place four EV charging parking stations, Greg? Is that right? Six. I'm sorry, can you repeat? How many EV charging parking stations?
On the Embarcadero? Six.
Six, yes. So working on that. Implement, or initiate implementation of Senate Bill 1383. And you heard from public works director Greg Qualick earlier this evening that the garbage company, Morro Bay Garbage, will be seeking rate increases to help implement Senate Bill 1383, and also pass through the Integrated Waste Management Authority, or IWAs, resulting expenses related to Senate Bill 1383. But all this isn't good, you know, to, to help reduce our waste streams and improve organic composting and other greening of, of basically our trash. And so these are very important efforts, but they are, they are requiring a lot of coordination across the county, and the city's been a major player in that. And councilmember Heller's been representing the city on the IWA board, but it looks like we're getting a lot closer to implementation, but there's a lot of steps involved, of course. Promote Central Coast Community Energy, or 3CE, new construction electrification program. So city staff is developing a climate action webpage where this information will reside, which should be online this summer. Create a city webpage with links to energy-efficient websites. That same website will have that information this summer. Elevate climate crisis to climate emergency by way of resolution and seek funding to move forward in this area. Council approved a resolution to that effect this February. Implement 3CE reach code incentive program for new residential development. City staff is working with the Tri-County Energy Network to develop a reach code related electrification and new residential development. This group is developing background material for preparation of a draft code that will be brought forward as part of the adoption of the 22 building code and to city council later this winter. The last goal is to improve community health. We continue to support Slow County in efforts to vaccinate members of the community. Inform the county process to update the tenure plan on homelessness. I sit on the, represent the city managers on a steering committee for the entire county to update that plan. The county has five, five members of the board who typically don't agree on anything, agreed 5-0 to fund positions, fund specific division related to homelessness, and to empower staff, their, their staff, and create more cohesive plan across all the cities and nonprofits to really tackle this issue. Not going to eliminate it, like all the plans used to say, but to truly make a dent and reduce homelessness, and that all cities would participate in that effort. Last is support Filipino-American group rededication event of their historic monument at Coleman Beach. Public work staff's working with the group on their event for this October. So those are the 28 action items that we've, have made some movement on. Some have completed, some are very initial, some are midway through, and there's several that we still haven't gotten to yet. But I would say that's pretty good progress since November of 2021, when these are all put in place. And just a note of caution, of course, is organizational capacity. I think we're pretty much running on full power, and it's, anything more would be a bit much, but these are important efforts that we're tackling in addition to the, the regular work of the city organization. So we do appreciate council's support of that and acknowledgement of that, of course, and we want to keep, continue working to achieve these ambitious goals and work plans. So with that, I'll turn it over to any questions that council may have.
Hey, thank you, Scott. I know we say it every time, but it's always amazing when we have it in front of us, the amount of work that's being done and the amount of action items that we've made great progress on. So I want to not only thank you, but I want to thank the complete staff for all of the work that they've done to make this happen, and we, we appreciate it greatly. We're, I know we're almost at the end line, but man, tremendous project, progress, and thank you guys so much. Any questions for Mr. Collins on the goal report? Councilmember Ford, any questions?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I have a question for you, Scott. When you're talking about the 10-year plan for homelessness, can you give me an idea of where you are on that as far as completion of that plan? Like how far out we are before we see something?
Good question. I'm hoping that I can bring the county staff to a council meeting in the near future to kind of give a broad update on what the Board of Supervisors approved and provided direction to the county staff on related to this, but we're getting pretty close to getting ready to deliver a report to the Board of Supervisors. In fact, there's an all-day session this Friday to really try to bring all the pieces together. The county did invest in a consultant group who specializes in creating these plans. They've been fantastic. Susan Fong is the council representative for all council members across the cities, and she's been phenomenal. I don't know how she finds time to do this, but she's been driving this. And the county has a dedicated individual for homelessness, Joe, and I can't pronounce his last name, but he's retired military, and he's quite something. So a lot of great folks working on this, and the nonprofits are at the table, and an individual who's experienced homelessness in our county, so a really thoughtful approach. And so I'm hoping that we can have something to deliver to the councils, at least here's the plan. And then there's a thoughtful approach, a five-year kind of runway, a first sort of, how do we create a better countywide system, and then the implementation that comes after, looking at housing people where they're at. You know, some things that, you know, you're gonna need to, literally on the ground, whether it's safe parking or sanctioned camps sites, to things that Grover Beach are trying, like the tiny homes and, and other, other methodologies, because just the cost of land is so expensive and building anything is, it's like a half a million to three-quarters of a million dollars per unit, so that's not sustainable with the numbers of homeless folks we have. It'll be truly a five-year plan, but one I think will be implementable. So hopefully, in the next several months, we'll have information to share with council.
Thank you. That was a very well, you dove deep into that answer, so I appreciate that. That was, you went above and beyond what I was asking, so thank you. And I, I'm really looking forward to seeing that come across because it's near and dear to my heart, and I know that it's one of the most common questions that comes across to me, just at the grocery store, you know, and talking to random people is, is what's happening with our unhoused population here. So that was, that was a standout for me, but that's the only question I have regarding these goals. I just, I guess I'll save my comments for later? Yeah, okay, that's my only question. Thank you.
Councilmember Addis, any questions?
Yes, Scott, you hit on something I think is really important, but I was wondering if you could explain just a tiny bit more. You said housing people where they are at, and if you could just kind of illuminate a little bit what, what's meant by that and why would we, as part of our 10-year plan, be looking at that closely?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's sort of evolution of where an individual's at, you know, whatever issues they have that they're experiencing in building trust with service providers. You know, sometimes it takes 20 or 30 touches before somebody will, will trust an outreach worker before they will take services. You know, often hear the adages that, well, people are rejecting services, and that, they all get cast under that umbrella, and it's like, well, they, they just refuse help. And it's like, well, they don't trust you yet. So I think that's part of the, the plan, is to understand that there's an evolution with folks who, some have been on the street for, for decades, that you're not gonna be able to house them overnight, so there's kind of interim steps. Some people just don't want to be housed in an adjoining facility where there's lots of people around, because they may have mental health issues that doesn't, doesn't make that work. So we have to think about that in space as well. And there's also carve-outs for diversity, equity, inclusion in this effort, as well as people with special needs. So that's, that's kind of what I meant by that. Yeah.
This is from Mr. Qualick. With regard to your comment on the, excuse me, the electric chargers, do you have timeline on when we might be implementing those? And I'll tell you why I ask, is that, you know, with obviously the high prices of gases, people are trying to get electric cars, but they're not available, but I see this pent-up demand that's going to be out there, and just wondering where we stand on timeline.
That's a great question. Thank you, mayor. Our timeline currently is limited by PG&E, so we are, we are done with design on our side, and it's been submitted to PG&E, and PG&E is now reviewing it. From what I understand, we didn't, we didn't know that that was a step that we would have to take, or at least into the, into the level of detail that they're going. And it, it could take from six to nine months for them to review that. Hopefully, it doesn't take that long, but, but that, that is the phase we're in. I should also mention that we are working on an EV project, an EV charger project at Delmar Park as well. So we did. So, we did work with a company to apply for a Cal EV IP grant, and their original design was putting five chargers up at Delmar Park to take advantage of the proximity of the church and the, and the school right there, as well as folks who are visitors to that park. And that's currently something that we're still working with a, a, a company for. I should note that that company now has concerns that it may not, it may not turn a profit for them to even work on the project, but we, we're working with them, and we're hopeful that that project comes through.
And also, the Tascadero Road Hotel has, how many? Will be putting in how many? I'm trying to remember, Scott, Graham?
Uh, nine, and I think we have another four going in the parking lot in front of McDonald's.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. Councilmember Barton, any questions?
I, I just wanted to thank the city manager for reporting on this list, because it's such a long list, it kind of, you know, it has a way of floating, and it's nice to see it all in one place and hear the updates. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Heller?
Uh, thank you. With respect to the housing element, I was looking at it before the meeting, and I think we all talk about affordable housing and workforce housing, and yet in looking at the numbers, we're really not providing that housing for extremely low, very low or low income groups. The low-income groups, to a certain extent, are met through ADUs, but there's no real management of what those ADUs rent for, so I'm not so sure that those really, even though the state considers them as part of the calculation, I'm not sure that those are really affordable to the low-income folks. I guess the question is, is there some way, a lot of cities have, allow small units, like an ADU, with density bonuses, height variances and so forth, public benefits, so that affordable, really affordable units that can be purchased by people at an entry level are available? Is there any chance, is there any way we can make this housing element work in that way, so that smaller housing units can actually be purchased, as opposed to rented?
Yeah, it's a great question, Councilmember Heller. Beyond the, you know, the low, low, the hot, low-cost or low-income affordable project being built by Highway 411, I mean, that's the first one that comes to mind. I mean, that's actually being developed now, but Scott Graham probably has an idea of where some of these things, like the, the density bonus and the inclusionary housing ordinance and things like that, may be able to deliver actual units. So I'd probably turn to Scott and see, you know, what this might materialize in terms of number of units, or what shape that would look like.
Yeah, I mean, we're in the process of developing that policy. We have a consultant working with us right now. Our design group is working with us on it. We're pushing out the density bonus to other types of development, not just related to housing, but also the impacts that commercial development has on housing. We build more commercial, they need employees, employees need places to live, and so we're sort of making that sort of connection between the, the commercial development that we have in the city and, and housing. So, that will probably, you know, result in us getting more housing, you know, on that type, on that side of things. The, the things that we have in the pipeline right now, the, the item that Scott mentioned over at Sea Shell Estates, where we're looking at zoning that property to probably accommodate somewhere in the neighborhood of about 70 residential units. Those are probably going to be mostly apartment-type units. The surrounding property owner that's along, that owns a majority of the site around there, around Casa de Flores, as well as the Lady on Yard for the Wharf Project, they own that area, we leased it from them, is also looking to do something along these lines, really more for, for sale units, as opposed to actual, as opposed to rental units. And so, portions of those projects will be affordable, based on our affordable housing requirements. So at least 10% of them will be affordable.
So it sounds like there's some hope for actually having units for sale that would be affordable?
Uh, yes, yes, Councilmember.
I mean, one of those ranges. The reason I ask is, in looking at the census information and the housing element, apparently 40% of the residents here live alone. So, I mean, if I were living alone, I'd be more than happy to live in 400 or 600 or 700 square feet and, and own it. And I just want to make sure that those options, that we look at those options, and what kinds of combinations we would have to, to make, to make, to make that work. Do you think it's feasible in, in any way?
So, so folks can, folks can build whatever size, you know, can build smaller homes. We are looking at putting a premium on larger homes, so we could get in loofis to come in, and we could use that to offset costs of providing affordable housing. So, houses, the cutoff that we're looking at right now is 2,500 square feet and above, and you would pay a higher amount of housing impact fee as it relates to that, so it could help, you know, offset again some of the costs of housing. And then we're also looking at increasing the percentage for projects. We have the Panorama 61 Lot Subdivision up there, currently 10% of those would be required to be affordable. We have the Chevron/Texaco property that's also on North Main, that could accommodate upwards of 200 units, it's high-density residential. The folks that have been looking at purchasing that property have been, you know, have looked at doing a mixed project, where some units are rental apartment-type units, and others are condo-type units, which is the type of housing you have to put there, one of those two, because it's high-density. So, those are some of the, you know, at least, you know, concepts or, or projects that could be coming down the road that would have, you know, units like that in them, and then they would have a, again, a percentage of those units upwards of 20, if we increase it even more than that, affordable housing units.
And then when you say affordable, that refers primarily to the low classification, which you have to have 80% of median income?
Low, moderate, very low.
Or is it moderate? Because moderate's 120% of median.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay.
Yeah, I know, we would be, the city gets to dictate what the units come in at. You also want to do it in a manner, when you're working with the folks that are developing the projects, so we're not making things, you know, and feasible for them to develop the projects, but yeah, we would be able to, through the discretionary permitting process, identify what those units would come in at.
Okay.
So it's not just moderate.
Right, okay. That answers my questions for that section. Climate action, the vehicle charging station. It's my understanding that really the bottleneck for more electric vehicles is the infrastructure, not just in Moro Bay, but along the major freeways and highways and so forth. I was bold enough to ask Vistra, when they gave me the tour of the plant, to provide 50 EV charging stations at no cost to the city, and support it with renewable energy. So I don't know if that will come to pass, but I, I think we need to ramp up, not only to your point, what the timeline is, but, but maybe greatly increase the number that we're thinking about, because the, the demand is certainly there, and I think the, the bottleneck will be the charging stations. So, that's my comment on that. Regarding SB 1383, to follow up on Director Quillak's comments, yes, there will be a rate increase coming to support this unfunded mandate from Sacramento. I support the intent of the mandate, which is we divert organic waste, meaning all your yard clippings and food waste, away from the landfill, and the simplest way for us to do that is individuals, is to no longer use our garbage disposals, which I know is antithetical or anti-intuitive or disintuitive, whatever the right word is, counterintuitive. But yeah, don't use your garbage disposals anymore, and collect your, your organic waste from food waste, and put it in a container, get it in a green container. For commercial businesses, I believe if you generate two cubic yards or more in solid waste per month, that you have to have a green waste can as well. So, the cost right now is a little bit squishy, so the rate increases are going to happen. I represent the City of Moro Bay on the county board, the IWMA board. We are pushing hard to get the cost of compliance down, which is basically what you're paying the IWMA for, is to focus on compliance. The more we can comply on our own, the less the cost will be, and we want to focus on primarily the big commercial vendors on, on that. So that's kind of the announcement I wanted to make at the beginning, but I felt so badly that we had to wait so long because of the technical problems, I didn't make it, so that's, those are my questions and comments.
Thanks, Councilmember Heller. Okay, I'll go ahead and open up public comment for item C-4. A public comment is now open. Come on down, Betty.
Thank you, Betty Winholz, again. I have four comments. One is regard to your goal on infrastructure, and I, I just want to raise the point to you and to the public, that that does not include any street repairs or anything for residential neighborhoods. The way that you scoped that goal, infrastructure kind of makes people think, oh, you're taking care of us and our streets, and, and you're not. It's all focused on the Embarcadero, it's focused on things in the tourist area, and so I want to make that comment as a layperson, that I object to that goal. In terms of the zoning and the zoning code, which is coming back, it, it used to be, and being old, that's how I think, that we, as a community, used to talk about the zoning ordinance and how it fit into our plan, and then it went to coastal. But so much these days, it's like staff visits with coastal, then it comes back to the community, and it's already in a sense a done deal. So I just want to say I don't like that process, the way it's turned out. And then, two other comments regarding to the housing. For years, we've been trying to get a safe parking area in Moro Bay, and somehow staff or whoever has always stopped that from either happening in Albertson's parking lot, or the old Williams Brothers parking lot, but I'm not sure why we're waiting for the county's plan to do what we know we need to do, and we haven't done, and I don't see that the councils helped that at all. And so, you really need to move on in terms of developing us a safe parking spot. And then my final comment is actually a question, finally, instead of a criticism, and that is, in terms of the EV stations, I know people pay for that, but like you were talking a little bit ago, who pays for that infrastructure? Is that falling back on our tax dollars? Is that something that you're getting grants for? There's been at least three projects that have come through, the Planning Commission, where the EV stations were left, left to the option of the developer, as opposed to being mandated. So, and then some of those have come to you, and again, you have not mandated those. So I'm, I'm just bringing that up, so it can be in front of you to be a little bit more forthright.
Thank you, Betty. Public comment is still open for item C-4. Seeing no members of the public, do we have any AGP, any calls for C4?
Mayor, we have number eight, ten, and a key.
Okay, I will close the public comment, bring it back to council. Just, Mr. Quillak, regarding, well, maybe start with Mr. Graham, regarding the hotel, the new hotel, payment of the charging stations, the responsibility?
Is, is, is the responsibility of the hotel?
Right, exactly. It's the responsibility of the hotel. And Mr. Quillak, with regard to the other stations you're considering?
Yeah, so the stations at the Embarcadero that are funded through the ATCD grant have a 40% match requirement, so there are some city funds going into that. The, the stations that are potentially going in at Delmar Park are through a Cal EV IP grant. I'd have to double-check on the, on the match requirement. I believe there is a match, but it's small. So, I, yeah, I need to check on that.
So in essence, at the most 40%, but for the most part, less than that?
Yeah, well, and if I may clarify, I'm, I'm thinking of a past role. Here, we are working with a company called Zero Impact Solutions, and their whole business model is that there, there is no financial impact to the city. So actually, the chargers at Delmar Park would have no upfront cost to the city.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. This is a receive and file, unless there are any other comments on this, we will receive it?
Quick comment, kudos to staff, this is a long list, and I know this is just the tip of the iceberg, and I applaud you for bringing it forward and actually discussing this early in the, in the game, so thank you for that, and keep up the good work.
Appreciate that.
I just wanted to thank the most.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Because I reserved my comments.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, staff, for your work on this, your continued work. I'm impressed, it is a, it's a large list, and so, all of your work is very much appreciated, and, and I do, thank you, Mr. Collins, for keeping us up to date. I really appreciate that. As Councilmember Barton said, sometimes you kind of forget the long list of what they are. I mean, you look through them, and you focus on certain ones, but it's always great to see the full list before us, so that is all I have to say.
Good, thank you for that, because, and I mentioned it up front before I opened up your questions, but behind every one of these is a tremendous amount of work, and if you have any intimate interaction with any of our city employees, you will begin to understand what goes into that, and that's why we often talk about capability and capacity when we bring new things forward. Speaking of which, that brings us to item D, future agenda items. I'll make mine simple, I promise. You're supposed to bring back C1 and C2 on 6/28 for final review. I'm simply asking, and maybe Mr. Newmeyer could tell me if it's okay to include this, I'd just like to add that we include an estimate of the future general fund subsidy required to continue to provide city services for both C1 and C2. That's a simple request, is that?
That could certainly be added to the staff report at the discretion of city staff.
If I can get some support.
I, I support that.
Good. Jeff, is that good for what we were talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, good, okay. Staff, Scott, is that, would that be okay, from a capacity standpoint?
Mr. Quillak?
Trying to get an idea of general fund depletion in the future. That's my goal.
I'm sorry, I was, yeah, that's a yes. I was, I was attracted, yes.
Okay, so, on that note, seeing that sedation has crept into the meeting, unless there are any other future agenda items, looking here, no? Well, listen, thank you all for being here, I'm not sure if we have a video audience, but that ends our meeting. The next meeting of the Moro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, at 5:30 PM, right here at the Vets Hall. Thank you, good evening, and thank you for the privilege of your time.